This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Vanier?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Wells?
Here.
Here. All in the wanting to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, fire department, city workers, and hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
The one, just that one.
Yeah.
Resolution for consideration, the one from the Art Kansas City Beautification and Tree Advisory Board. So that was not the ordinance, but under the resolutions to consider has been removed. Anything else? It's, uh, go on down, next one. Item resolutions for consideration, the beautification board. You have that one?
That one's.
That one's been removed.
Okay. And the new business resolution, number one, be removed? That move?
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, the approval of agenda.
I saw move. We approved the agenda with the, uh, changes for the, that we removed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five oh. I don't believe there's any awards or proclamations. I don't see any recognition of visitors. Um, I do know there's someone wishing to speak tonight, um, on some of that's not on the agenda.
My name's Kenny Davis and I'm out here in Art City. Hi, Kenny.
Hi, Kenny.
And, uh, I'm up to buy the ground where the hospital used to sit. And, uh, I want to put a big shop on there, put a fence around it. And I don't know if I get approved or not. That's why I'm here for.
Have you talked to the city manager about this?
I've talked to Randy a couple times.
Okay, did you tell him?
Well, I, I told him there was other, you know, the, there was plans for parks and stuff in the future, but, uh, I didn't know what the commissioner's, desires to be for that property.
What kind of shop you gonna put in there, sir?
I want to put a fifty by fifty shop in there, electric ants to it.
I mean, for what?
For my own purpose.
Yeah, but you, what would you be doing in that shop? I mean, building stuff or, I mean?
I'd be building stuff.
Okay.
For personal, not for business.
Right. I don't know if you gotta have its own, uh, commercial or residential. It's residential.
Well, if you're not trying to run a business out of it, it would be residential, correct? Is that right, Josh?
The only, uh, issue is that you can't have the residential, or you can't have an accessory building without a residence.
Oh, okay.
So it'd have to be commercials.
Or R two? I don't.
Or mixed use, or you have.
Why did you pick this particular property?
It's right across street from my house. You know?
Okay, and you feel like you could, you know?
I'd like to put a garden on there and stuff.
Okay.
But I'd like to buy it all or buy an acre. It don't make me either, either way, just an acre or a whole thing. And I like to know how much you want for it.
How much you willing to give?
Ten dollars.
That's not enough. Go sit down.
I don't know.
Well, we've got plans. We have plans that, uh, extending the park and putting in, uh, event center and library, possibly, in that, where the old hospital.
Since that hospital been going now?
It's gone six or seven, maybe eight.
How long does it take to do that stuff?
A long.
A long time, but if you get the money, without even city money.
Correct.
So, and B.T. Wilkins has, uh, paid for grants for us to try to get that, so, uh, I'm not sure if, uh, well, I think if it doesn't go apart, there's in talks of housing or other things on that anyway, which is something our commit, our, I speak for, that our commission's been trying to get is more housing in this community, so, but doesn't go apart, that may be a prime location one day for that. I don't, I mean, there are some things that's kind of being discussed about, so I'd be reluctant, reluctant personally, myself, to give it just for a shop at that location. I know the convenience. I'm sure, I'm sure Josh, or there's some.
Land bank?
Yeah.
For like an acre or so.
Probably even less than that, if you want a little less. I'm, I don't know, you'd have to.
Well, I don't want it down here to swim, Lord. I want a decent area.
Kenny, you're. I know, I know.
It's just that, well, you know, we had some aspirations of getting something nice for the city to use.
I understand.
And it's, it's nice that you came up and asked for it.
You know?
No. Can't have it. But I'm sure we can have Josh work with you.
I recommend, sir, I recommend you maybe check with Josh tomorrow, whenever you can, and he'll give you descriptions of all the land properties and the land bank and properties the city owns around there. That would probably fit what you want to do and just have you look at it and drive and see what you want to do, you know? And it'd be a lot cheaper, it'd be a lot cheaper than working on that, because it's gonna be pretty costly, you know, because it's just a, it's just a center part of the town and, and there's a lot of things could be developed in that area, you know, so.
Yeah, I understand. But why don't you stand on doing it?
Well, that's exactly right. You gotta be twenty dollars, someone probably can't get down tomorrow. Yeah, that's true. Thank you, Kenny. Thanks for understanding. Um, next up is the consent agenda to approve the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one special call meeting minutes and the July twentieth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes as written, so.
Which one you want of us?
I heard Karen first.
Okay.
That's all I heard.
I called the other two for the second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimously. Next up, new business.
We have two ordinances for consideration. First of all, let's consider first reading of an ordinance authorized in zoning a properly located at eleven ten Mr. Kansas Avenue from M U mixed-use district to C three general commercial district.
This image is probably the best one to start with. This shows the location of the proposed travel center truck stop, whatever you want to refer to it as. I'm at the corner of the roundabout, there are Kansas and bypass. That sort of use would not be allowed in a mixed-use district, um, so it need to be regone to a C three district. When we did the comprehensive plan back in two thousand thirteen, we had no idea what we were going to do with this land. That's why we chose mixed use, the planning commission did when we were doing that, um, and the zoning just matched what was in part of the future land use plan. Basically, that property has been agriculture since, as long as we know. It was then extended to the city back in two thousand seven, along with some of the other properties in that. Just kind of said there would been leasing it to a farmer there that's been, that's some we built in there. But we feel that this is something that probably would be good for the community. Um, right now, sure you've seen probably heard many complaints about the trucks that park along sixty-first road and around the golf industrial park area. So part of the idea is having a nice truck stop here in town, pull some of those off of that street, get them into a better place where they can be staged.
Josh, I've got a question on that acres. How much is the city and how much, there's, there's private acres right there that this, to be included into that? So how much acreage are we looking at, private and city?
That part that's private still, it's owned by the Frazies, is not included.
Oh, he saw it, okay.
Interesting. Just, I think we proposed originally, it was gonna be about four acres. I think that's gone up just a little bit to, I think it was about fourteen, does that sound about right? Is what we're proposing to actually transfer to the.
And what, besides trucking, what else can go in there? Is that, they have, they set a plan yet or anything?
I think there was also a proposal for like a restaurant, convenience store.
Okay. And that, I know the one thing I've had, though of course, I would, is that Williams Way to get to the pond, is that still gonna be accessible or available, or are we gonna have to?
That was gonna be excluded from the transfer.
All right. And then we get stuff that, so we can utilize that, because I've had a lot of people ask me to utilize that pond.
Well, that's, that's, you know, um, that's up there quite a bit further than the truck stop area, or, you know?
Yeah, but the question is, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to raise that up, don't they, because they gotta raise it like foot, don't they? Well, and we're probably, they're gonna have to get dirt, probably from us, or me.
Well, I, we don't know that.
But if it is, maybe we could make a deal with, like, uh, Dwayne was saying, that they could, you know, trade dirt for getting access to that, you know, pond up there, because there's a lot of people wants fishing that pond, or, you know, get to it.
Yeah, there's, there's some other thing, considerations on digging up there that we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Situation. I know Sandy's here tonight to, to monitor that, maybe address it, but, uh, um, so, so yeah, there's some, there's some possibilities there, but also some, you know, we'll have to be careful about as well.
Some of that's up for negotiation still, or can we?
Oh, yeah, it's very much, I mean, it's, we're, we're still in the early stage.
As long as we change the zoning, should like to see the Frazies sell that land they have there, because.
I don't remember what the early conversation was, but didn't get a hold of them or what it was, but they never could come to any kind of agreement. Now I understand, but probably would if it happened today.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, they can't use it for basically anything. I mean,
It's not very viable for.
No. Well, usually, you know, when those truck stops go in like that, usually it's a, you know, it's convenience center, you know, eating place, and sometimes it's motel, you know, stuff like it, so if they get more than that, they might be, you look at that property. The other thing I have is, uh, coming off the bypass, I've had some people, you know, you know, heard about, you know, maybe there's might be something going there, but is there gonna be confusion when they come out around that bypass and coming into that location as far as backing up, you know, uh, traffic and stuff or not, or do we?
I think we'll probably have to look at like a, a right turn lane.
Okay.
I mean, off of Kansas. And that, one, one thing I should mention too, is that they look, we looked at a off ramp off of the bypass, but KDOT would not.
They would not.
But the access has to be.
Okay, so.
And the, and the study also showed KDOT that, uh, that the roundabout was, um, adequate for the traffic.
Yeah.
They looked at some additional, oh, I can't remember the percentage of additional they added to that, but it was adequate to handle all that.
And the argument too is that it actually won't generate much more traffic than what's already going by, but anyways, sure, it may generate a little more in Kansas, but. See a huge change. That's kind of what the traffic.
So, the big truck, the truckers that are coming into there, they still are not supposed to go on Kansas Avenue.
Right, that would still not be considered a truck.
Yeah, so.
They should not, other than obviously to access the facility.
Yeah, well, that, for that area there, yeah.
Every truck I see is on some other streets.
They are, so. That street, I have to widen for them, they could right-hand turn, is that what you're saying? Okay, I, I see that. We can do that. I mean, the, the purple line I've got here on my pad is, uh, doesn't show that, but, uh, well, I mean, I don't know how much is, is a city-owned property. Is it, is all the way across Kansas Avenue?
Are you looking at this?
Yeah, well, what I'm looking at is, is this. I mean, you can't see it.
Okay.
And that's, that's all, my arm missed it now, but, uh, between where the line is and Kansas Avenue there, or that curve, is that still city property?
Road right away?
Yeah. Road right away, but that's ours.
That was widened as part of that bypass.
But that's ours. It's our land, yeah, okay. Talking about. What about the sewer and water in that area? We're gonna have to look, I mean, is that gonna be a problem, or?
Well, on here, that red line is a proposed.
Okay.
Water is.
And that goes over to the, the building school, is that where it connects to?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's their old ball field.
That green line there is the old sewer line?
That's an existing sewer line.
Existing, okay.
They can't connect to that one on the south side because that's the force main or, uh, country club estate.
Yeah, okay.
It would be, it would be too expensive.
Well, that's a high-pressure line, so it could, yeah, it could.
It'd have an injector or.
That, that line there was deep enough that, um, it could be a gravity feed.
Gravity feed?
So there wouldn't have to be lift stations.
Okay, and water line can go through there too?
It's down, the blue line down below.
Blue line, oh, I see the blue line, okay.
Already exists.
That's pretty close, too. They usually have a truck wash too, don't they, for those big convenience, the things?
It's not, not in the plans at this point, but if that's something that would be separate, it wouldn't be part of the sewer system. It'd have to have, um, bins or something of that nature to handle that.
Do what now?
They'd have to have little bins or something to.
Okay.
I like the, the, the city system.
But in the future, we could, couldn't we, if they want to?
Uh, I don't know. There'd have to be some type of pre-treatment before that. We wouldn't allow them to run off, uh, truck wash into the city system.
City system?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we know cat, all that cattle stuff going in there, yeah?
Reeses and.
Yeah, all that stuff, okay.
They may have that up at Creekstone, I don't know, wash them down.
But at this point, it's not.
Okay, all right.
Me a store, you all in a restaurant.
Questions? Basically, all that we're doing today is, is just, uh, making the, the difference in the, uh, making it a commercial district then. Or mixed use to a C three? Yeah. Colin?
How does that one affect, uh, when the Sark City Greenhouse is there?
They would still have their own private drive and their own property. Wouldn't have, theoretically, it wouldn't affect their property or their driver entrance or anything, or their, or their land, unless they own that field, but I don't, I don't know how much it would affect.
We've made contact with them on easement, uh, just easement discussions for the wastewater line, so they're aware of it and we've been talking to them.
Quite interesting what it's gonna be to their taxes.
To their taxes?
Could answer that.
I have no idea.
Yes, Sandy.
I just wanted to address, but that's another part of this. So, right here is what's in question. So the Exanova Lamb Platte runs from the east riverfront here. It runs all the way to about right here. Okay, so you would be digging on Exanova Platte in and of itself, that doesn't mean anything, okay? We're not opposed to your rezoning it, but what we would like is some time to investigate this area. That would be to map it out, to run LiDAR and see what is here. Because if you recall, when the highway was put in back in the nineties, they encountered one physical remain. And that remain was right here. And the deal with physical remains is the repartation act of nineteen ninety says that if you encounter a physical remain, then the project stops. The tribe would decide if they want the physical remain left in its current location, or if they want it re-entered somewhere else. If the tribes, if you encounter physical remains and the tribe says they want it left there, you cannot build there. So in Exanova's mind, we need to do our due diligence by making sure there's nothing there that's gonna cause you a problem. And secondly, just get a map outline of this, so we kind of know where things were in the big picture. We're not opposed to the zoning. We understand that you're probably gonna build there, but because it is in the Exanova Platte, we would just like the opportunity to be able to do that.
How soon are you talking about, I mean?
I don't know.
How long?
Sixty days.
Okay.
I don't know how long it takes for a builder to start, but, but the key, the key is, so when the highway was put in, this highway and they redid Kansas across this way, they only allowed excavation and investigation on the highway route and this round circle. So everything out here, everything out here, out here, and out here has not been investigated. Now, we do know what's on your popular walking trail, which you've already built on. We know what's there because we can map it, because obviously, it's mostly still open field. As the diagonal runs, it runs from about the house on J Street directly this way is where we saw the main concentration of artifacts based on where the highway ran. Now, that's out, a little bit outside of where you are here, but we would still like to do our due diligence and make sure we know what's there. So again, not opposed to the zoning, but want to make you aware that that human remain was found very close to where you're going. And if we can prevent it, if, if we don't, if we know it's there and we can avoid it, or we cannot dig in that area or whatnot, that's the best way for you to go. Because once you dig it up, it's over. Any questions for me on that?
So you have to go to Exanova and get them to do whatever they have to do?
We'll do what we need to do, yes.
And what's, what?
In the time.
You need from us?
Nothing, just permission to do it.
And you get that done in the next sixty days?
We'll do everything we can to, yes.
Well, that's.
The reason I'm really here, though, is also for the protection of the city. Because if we, if there are human remains here, you're gonna want to know that before you start digging.
And before the business.
Yeah, right.
Before they just start digging, yeah.
You don't lose a ton of money.
That would be, that would be, the company would be the one losing the money on that.
Because again, if you dig it up and they don't want it moved, you can't build there.
What year was that found?
Nineteen ninety. It's called the repartation act. Well, in ninety-four, they found one physical remain. Now remember, they were only allowed to excavate on the highway and on Kansas where they rebuilt that and on one sixty-six out to the country club. So they found it in this corner of the roundabout, so we don't know what's on the outside of that. We don't know what's on the outside of any of this. Now, just because you find, find one, doesn't mean you're gonna find a lot.
It's a little cowboy.
Something to think about. The whole time they dug the highway, the roundabout, all down here and all the way up to the country club, they only encountered one physical remain, it was right there. So I mean, just trying to save everybody some time and a whole lot of rest.
Yeah, I, I say we better have a sixty, I think that probably needs something you'd want to work out with the developers or whoever's doing it, so they know, and they may already be aware, I don't know.
They, they're not aware.
Yeah, they're not ready to start tomorrow.
We're not letting.
There's gonna be a year still down the road on this thing.
Well, I, I think they were hoping to start doing some, some construction by the end of this year.
Okay.
But, um, they've already got quite a bit of money, uh, tied up and, uh, they had to spend quite a bit of money on the flood, getting things out of the flood plain. Um, they've been working with engineers and architects on, on design, so they've, they've got, I mean, they probably have seventy to a hundred thousand dollars tied up in this thing already, so. And, uh, Sandy just made it, well, I think she was just aware of it on their end when it was a newspaper article out.
The house we moved was the first time.
Okay, and so, um, and then she contacted me and, and this, this project's been going on for, before me, several years before me, so, um, there was just that lack of communication that, that no one knew about. The city didn't know about the issue there and, and they didn't know about the project, and so it just kind of came together after things are going.
From happening in the future, I'm gonna provide Pete and Josh with a map of where we believe the Exanova Platte lies. That doesn't mean you can't do anything with property you want to. It just means that these might be concerns to think about.
Want to get it mapped out ahead of time, yeah.
Well, sure.
The other thing I would say is in that corner, you know, obviously you are gonna have to build that up, obviously. So it may be that in that area, there won't be a lot.
Well, Frazies, we don't, we can't, they're not touching that corner, right, because that's not part of it. Yeah, it's not part of it.
But I mean, depending on your, your, uh, your developer, they may be bringing dirt in versus digging.
Yeah.
But see, I don't know how far down gas pumps have to go. I don't know how far down the media that stuff is.
Footage would be the main thing, I think.
So I think it would be better to say something now.
Thank you.
So, I mean, we, if we rezoned it, it'd still be up to the developers and we just have to put contingency list, rezonate, giving Exanova sixty, sixty days.
I don't know, I, and I don't think you need to do that, um, contingency, rezonate, but I know a staff will be working with the developer and Exanova to make sure this stuff gets done properly.
We, we still obviously have to transfer physically the property.
Yeah, but that hasn't been done yet either.
We haven't had even that yet.
Yeah.
So that, will that give them sixty days to look at that, if, whatever we gotta do yet?
I don't think that's really gonna cause a problem. We haven't received any kind of plans, detailed plans even, so.
That takes time. I'm just gonna make aware of it. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. That's, then we can relay that on to the developers and let, make sure we just give them their time, but I think what you're saying, Josh, is before we transfer the land, say, well, we gotta give them sixty days, and then at that point, I mean, we could, yeah, so.
It probably could.
Find out. That being said, I'll, I make the motion, we authorize the rezoning of the property located at, uh, one 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 zero east Kansas Avenue from M U mixed-use district to a C three general commercial district. Yeah, I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded, and is this as a roll call vote, isn't it? Yes.
Mr. Eastman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Vanier?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on new business.
The second, uh, ordinance for consideration, instead of first reading of an ordinance, authorizing the rezoning of property located at sixteen Philmore Avenue from R one, over to the residential district to P, public use district.
All right, this request is from the college. They have owned this particular piece of property. There it is. It is right behind the ball field the city used to have, but they have owned this property since about twelve. And it hasn't been anything on it since.
That's a city park?
City ball field.
Yeah, it's on the college now, but it's still.
Center field.
I can't.
So it's behind, it's behind the ballpark? It's behind the ballpark, it's basically east, it's east and south of.
The premier body.
Ballpark, okay.
Three fifth, that three one five thing?
Am I right? It's east and south of Premier. Are you talking about the city ballpark, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's east.
Yeah, Philmore is the street that runs right by Premier.
Yep, on the north side of the ball fields.
Yeah. Anyway, what they're proposing there, they want to, um, relocate, they have a bus barn over by the softball field on Sixth Street. Um, but they're wanting to change that to their construction trade facility, and so now they're going to need a new bus barn for their buses. And this has been kind of their, they've had long-term plans for that area for quite a while, that master plan. It's not exactly what, what that is, but it is something they're wanting to change. And unfortunately, the, something like this kind of use wouldn't be allowed in the residential district. And also, they were needing some relief on their setbacks, and they wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to make setbacks for their current development.
Have you had any plates with the residents living right there in that area?
I have. I talked with the resident that was dressed directly south of there, and about the only thing he was concerned about was his mailbox. Because his mailbox is at the corner of Bein Fo Mark. He said that he's had, his only other concern is that he has a lot of problems with security, like theft and stuff like that, so. He's seen to thinks that this might even improve that way of the area, maybe some additional.
So how many buses, how big a building is that gonna be? How many buses will be in there?
I think they have pretty, pretty good size.
So it'll be the same size building where they've been fitting their buses, same before where they're at?
Can't say.
Okay.
Honest for this, but it is a pretty good size.
Yeah.
And they already own it.
Yeah, same.
So we're not gonna take any more off the taxes. So we're not going to take any more off the taxes.
Any questions?
Oh, but I'm going to move that we authorize the rezoning of three fifteen East Philmore Avenue from R one low density residential to public use district.
My second.
Motion's been made and seconded to rezone three, one, five east Philmore Avenue from R one to P or public use district. This one, so I believe be a roll call vote.
Mr. Eason?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Yes. New business.
We have two items for other acts for consideration, but as reviews have been received and solicited by the grant administrator for the C D B G housing.
So we sent, uh, um, so part of the, uh, housing grant that we'll, we need to solicit grant administrator. We picked a grant, um, writer, um, last, last, um. And so this will be a grant administrator. That'll be part of the application. And so we sent out, um, applicant, or RFPs to, to five certified administrators and we received back two responses. One was from Ranson and one was from SCED. So when we opened the, the proposals, um, went down through it, we scored it. City staffs, um, scored the SCED proposal at eighty nine points and, uh, Ranson, uh, proposal eighty three points. So staff would recommend that we go with the SCED proposal. Costs are the, the costs to do the grant administration are the same for each. There was, Ranson was a little higher on the grant writing portion of it than, than SCED, but we'd already awarded that. So. And SCED's been kind of involved in some of our initial work with the hat and things like that. So we felt like they were, um, a better fit. And then also the fact that they have some, um, the, the other programs that would fit well into this that, um, with the weatherization, things that they can add to the, to the program that the other doesn't have. So that's why we recommend we go SCED on that.
Any questions?
Well, that being said, I'd make a motion. We select a certified grant administrator for the C D B G housing project.
Motion is made and seconded. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five oh. Next up.
Discuss the formation of a special committee to discuss the future of Paris Park Pool.
Think the idea behind that, we had a meeting, was it last Tuesday, Wednesday, something like that, Tuesday? To work with all entities, the college, USD four seventy, the rec board, along with Landon West and Deb Davidson. Landon's in charge of the rec center and Landon, or Landon's in charge of the rec center and Deb does everything with pools and I Y Q and all that. And so our goal would be to get two from the school, the college and us, along with those people to start coming up with ideas and basically start a working process here into what we may be looking at or needing, because we really don't know all those things quite yet. So.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest that you and Kane be the two delegates because we've got three of us going to be rerunning and we don't know if we're going to get reelected or not. But anyway, I'm seriously, I'm just saying that I think you guys need to, because it will be, it will be continued on and you report back to the board as the things go on. So I think it should be the, the mayor and the vice mayor itself, but that's just my personal.
I agree with the contingency.
Sounds good.
I'm sorry to put you in that spot, but.
No, I don't. We already got a meeting, I think.
I was thinking Dwayne.
We got a meeting and, uh, what, next week from tomorrow, I think the eleventh or something like that at noon. And so I don't know who the school or college, if they're, how involved they're going to get with it right away, but I, they seemed interested at that meeting and seemed wanting to continue on and further explore the possibilities of what may or may not happen. So.
When is that meeting?
It, it can always change. You can always.
Yeah, we can.
Somebody can't make it. We could, you know, make one of us, you know, I mean, fill in for you or something like that, but.
Next, it's back on the day at noon, the eleventh.
So. Water plant.
I think it's the wastewater plant.
Wastewater.
Or not wastewater, the water treatment plant in the building. Yeah. It's on my mind. Well, do we need a motion for that or?
Just a consensus.
Or just a consensus?
Yeah, I think consensus is good enough.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Something else to do.
I, is there any, that's the last of new business, correct? City manager updates?
Uh, monthly Cali County Indoor Market, um, will be five to eight P M on Wednesday, the fourth at Burford.
And what's that, talk about, what's that, what is that?
The indoor market is kind of the crafts and the different merchandise.
Okay.
I think they used to have it out at the Chestnut.
Oh, venue. Okay. Yeah. Okay. I know what it is. Yeah. Okay.
Then Rice Cali steering committee will meet ten A M Tuesday, August tenth at the Cali County Courthouse. Also be able to see that on Zoom. Uh, the Cali County Legislative Committee, noon Tuesday, August tenth at the Chamber, Winfield Chamber of Commerce office. The Arc City Farmer and Art Market, um, will continue on from four to six thirty on Tuesday, August tenth and seventeenth at the Wilson Park Rotunda. Burford Theater will host a concert by Aaron Watson and Mike Love Band on, at eight P M on Thursday, August twelfth at Island Park in Winfield. Next city commission study session, uh, Friday, August thirteenth at noon.
Oh, I won't be there.
You won't. You're going to be in Colorado, aren't you?
I think the thirteenth.
Well, she's going out there. She can fly back.
Yeah.
Can't fly.
So, you know, with, uh, the new R H I D on downtown, the upper story is being added. The, uh, Main Street's going to host a Hutchison on that and that. Um, and so there's going to be several staff members from the city going along with Chamber of Commerce and Cali First, uh, folks. It's called a upstairs downtown workshop. Um, it'll be August sixteenth through seventeenth in Hutch. So we hope to learn some, uh, some good ideas and, and ways to help develop the upper floors on downtown and, and utilize that new R, R H I D program. So. Excited about that. And we'll bring back some, hopefully some good ideas that we can implement and.
Some, some free money, bring back some money for them.
Well, I don't know if it's money, but, um, make ideas on how to use some of the tools in our toolbox to maybe make it more affordable for people.
That's true.
Develop those areas.
This isn't anything new because I've been to league meetings to where they've talked about this and we just haven't been trying to work.
The new, the new pieces is the rural housing in the city district, um, addition to allowing downtowns into that program. So that's, that's another tool in our box. It's, uh, and it's, has to do with bond farming and, and.
Okay.
Money. So we'll learn more about.
Different than what they could talk about?
Yeah, it was something that was passed this last, it was passed legislative session.
Okay.
It's new and we need to learn about how we can use it.
So there's both of those that are possible?
And then, um, if you try to use elevator, uh, it won't work. So they've started working on it today. So finally that's moving forward. So in the next, you know, several weeks, they'll be working on it. So.
Did you get all the parts in yet? Cause they had a problem.
Yeah, they were unloading stuff here today and yesterday.
I think I was the last one to use.
Well, now what are you going to do?
Somebody needs it. So.
That'll be nice to have that done.
Yeah, be real nice.
Been a long time.
Just a couple of years.
Longer than that. How about fifty?
That's all I have.
I don't have anything else.
I'm at the town hall Thursday at the senior center, seven o'clock.
My weekend's.
I'll second. I'll have to commit my. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.